Does it have a hole in it?
Yeah. What's up?
We still have two minutes before nine o'clock.
I never noticed that.
Salute today, Pete.
Sure.
Steve, what's Denise's last name now?
Yes. I'm about to give her a bad time.
Good morning, welcome to the July 8th Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand with me as we salute the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence. We will be led by Supervisor Vanderpool. Ready, salute.
I have elected you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we take our first item of business, we do have an urgency item I would like to have the board consider adding as item number forty-three today would be heard after our last item. Regarding the State Water Resources Control Board, application for countywide emergency bottled water program. So we'll need to vote to add this to the agenda today as an urgency item.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would act on this matter as an item of urgency.
Moved by Worley, second by Ashida. Cast your votes.
Excuse me, it's supposed to be...
And there is a problem with supervisors, the Ashidas, the red no button is stuck. So let the record... Let the record show that unanimous vote, we will have this as item number thirty-three today's.
Yeah, I know, he can never make it.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add that I presume that this vote is based upon the fact that there is a need to make immediate attention because the county only learned about this program after the agenda was posted, and if they do not act immediately, that county residents who do not have access to water, primarily due to a water running dry, would not have water. And so that's the urgency for the item is that it came to the board's attention after the agenda was posted and there is a public safety harm if the board does not act immediately, correct?
That is the basis of my motion.
Thank you. Okay, we will now return to our agenda. Item number one, Board of Supervisor matters. Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, we continued to have our conference call with the Corps of Engineers with... And we also have onboard with us Mick Schaefer now is in on that because he has all the knowledge of Lake Success and all the backgrounds of leading up to the trying to enlarge the pool and where we've come from and where we're headed and where we're going now. Kyle Lombardi from Kevin McCarthy's office also is on that call with us. From the Porterville area, we have Baldo Rodriguez and John Lawless. I was on that call as well as Denise England from the board office. And we continue to pressure them to hopefully get us to a position where we can, one of these days, enlarge that pool. I think the study and part of it's over with. The seismic area, seismic issue is behind us, seepage issue is behind us. The only issue standing now between us and getting like a DSAC four, we're hoping for a DSAC three, that's a dam safety rating, is the widening of the spillway and 165 feet because of the fear of overtopping, which you could have a inflow greater than what the spillway could take care of and it would overtop the dam. So that's the only issue we have. And if we can get the SOG committee, which is going to be meeting on the twenty-second of this month, will come back with a rating on that. So hopefully we'll be able to move forward. That was what we discussed yesterday. We had a lower Tully meeting on the dam remediation project and everything's pretty much on hold until we get the green light. They had put out an RFP though for a Marina for Lake Success, and that's a good sign. And all the restrictions have been taken off of so we can fill the capacity if we have a good year coming up, a wet year, and let's hope we do. Tomorrow I'll be having a workforce investment meeting, and that's about all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last Monday, I attended a California Freight Advisory Committee meeting in Fresno, which was a public meeting to review the California State Goods Movement Plan. And there was in Fresno at the Caltrans office, which usually happens in a state meeting like that. They put up boards and information panels and you walk around the room and you talk to the different staff members about the plan. Unfortunately, the turnout was rather limited. This plan is going to go probably to the legislature by the end of the year. And this plan is needed because if you do not have an improved California freight plan, it would curtail your federal funding. So we hope to get this done by the end of the year. Supervisor Ennis and myself attended Pete McCracken's funeral last week, and it was very well attended. Next Monday, we have a Water Commission meeting at three o'clock in these chambers, which will cover the water bond, will cover some of the groundwater legislation that's being reviewed at the state legislature. And we will probably also cover a topic about local groundwater plans that we may have in the future. And that's all I have today.
Thank you, Supervisor Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, on the thirtieth of June, I had, we had our last, my last meeting as chairman of the Tulare County Association of Governments, and I will happily be handing off the reins to Mr. Cox for the next couple of years now. And then on Tuesday, I met with Craig Wheaton, Superintendent of the Visaya Schools at Ivanhoe. You know, we often forget about the fact we have these country schools, and we tend to think of them as being independent country schools, which most of them are. But in my district and others, we have schools that are a part of the larger organization of Visaya School District. And so we're going to try to arrange meetings so that we can get together and talk about common issues. One of the big ones coming up will be Goshen. As we do the overcrossing at Betty Drive, the school district is looking at making improvements to that school site there. So we want to make sure that we coordinate our efforts and make sure that we don't undo something that they're trying to do and vice versa. So we're going to try to arrange to have quarterly meetings with them so that we'll be on the same page. I had the privilege last week also of being at the Goshen Family Resource Center to read to some pre-kindergartnered kids, and that was a lot of fun. And then yesterday, there was a meeting in New London. It's London, but I always keep calling it New London not to confuse it with England. And the, there's an effort being made there to create a library. There's an individual who's a graduate who grew up in that community. He's a teacher. His name is Robert Iscurdo. And he's made it a one-man determination to create a library in that community, which is so lacking in so many things. And so Tulare County is also behind this effort. Our librarian, Jeff Scott, has applied for USDA grant, which would be to put a, one of our book vending machines in that community. They've located a site of property, which they're going to move a mobile unit from the Dynabus High School. Dynabus School's doing a renovation of their school sites, and so they're able to acquire a building for that purpose. And it's really, it's really has a life of, it's really taken off and doing quite well. So I'm very hopeful for that community, and that'll be coming up soon. Tonight, I'll be meeting with some of the local residents of the community of Monson. They have a real problem there with groundwater. They've historically had a high perched water table, and so many of the domestic wells are sixty-five, seventy-five foot in depth. And as you might expect, now they're finding that their wells are going dry. So I think we have at this point six wells that have gone dry. And these are all single family residences with their own independent wells, and there's not a water system there. We're hoping to get that changed. But in the meantime, we have some serious issues. So I'll be meeting with them tonight. That's about it.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
Just wanted to go over a couple of things. I had a meeting last week where I met with Caroline Coons from the Arts Consortium, and really met with her, and she was seeking information about what she could do to further expand the arts presence in the south part of the county. Shared with her several of my ideas, and she was very welcoming. And her board looks forward to helping to implement that and involving more South County residents in the arts programs that they're providing. So that was really a good meeting. And then also, just had a busy few weeks, meeting with constituents, talking about different road issues, and really do want to commend Hernan Beltran and the Resource Management Agency for the work that they do. They are very, very helpful and responsive even when there are very limited resources available. They do what they can. So I really appreciate their efforts. Lastly, wanted to go over an upcoming event that's absolutely critical for Tulare and for Tulare County, and that is the Cartmill Overpass, Cartmill Interchange Groundbreaking, which will be held in Tulare on July sixteenth at eight-thirty in the morning. That project is, I believe it's a $22 million project, not positive, but it's a multi-multi-million dollar project, was the basis for TCAG, our Association of Governments Going Out and Bonding, which we did receive a double A minus bond rating, which is fantastic. And we are moving forward with that project. So it's really great to see that happen in Tulare, and will have a lasting impact in Tulare County.
I just have a couple of things. This morning, tomorrow, we'll have a Retirement Board meeting. We do not have the final numbers yet, but we're looking at the year closing out at about 11 percent for the year for our retirement board investment pool. We're very excited about that. We'll have the final number out here within a month. The Summer Night Lights program continues to soar throughout Tulare County. We have some of our smaller communities participate, actually several of the smaller communities participating this year, having great success. In many cases, the smaller communities' attendance numbers are exceeding those of the larger cities on the regular events, with the exception of Dinoob, I must say, because of how they chose to do their Summer Night Lights program. And maybe that'll rub off on others in the future. But congratulations Supervisor Worley, District Four is doing very well with their attendance. I spent a large part of last week and some of this week looking through the cap and trade, trying to understand that, asking questions of staff, working with staff at TCAG and RMA, making sure that we are positioning ourselves so that we can benefit from that. And staff has assured me, both TCAG and our RMA staff, that we are positioning ourselves to benefit from those dollars. So we're, we're pretty, I'm pretty excited about that. But in order to be able to benefit from those, you have to be ready. You have to have done your, you know, your legwork up front, your paperwork up front, and have projects ready to go. So it's been a learning process for me over the last, you know, few days, just immersing myself into that, just wanting to make sure that we do benefit from that. Supervisor Ashida.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot one important item. Last week, we had a TCAG meeting, and we approved the Housing Element Study for TCAG. And in that report, what struck me, not odd, but disturbed me, is that there was more housing set aside for low-income and high-income brackets than there was for the middle class. On those three segments, the middle-class segment was the smallest segment of growth of housing in Tulare County. And that disturbs me greatly because I think this is happening nationwide. We're losing our middle class. It was pretty eye-opening to me, and we really need to create jobs for the middle class. Doesn't make sense. We can't keep going, we can't continue having more housing built for, for the low-income housing and more housing for the other income, upper-income housing, and we forget the middle class. And that's a comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now move to item number two on our agenda. Peg, are you here? I see you in the back there. If you wouldn't mind coming up. Here about a month ago, I received a letter from an agency notifying us that Peg had achieved something that very few in her field do. And I wanted to bring her up and highlight that and brag on you a little bit. Is that all right?
That's okay, thank you.
So Peg received, this is pretty impressive, and I'm sure you got some kind of certificate. We didn't get it. I'm sure you got it. But this was from the Public Technology Institute in Washington, DC. It was a twelve-month course for public sector CIOs and IT directors. And the purpose of the program is to equip leaders with the tools to manage and improve their organizational technology assets. And the one of the things I highlighted here, that we seldom find in government, practical applied knowledge. So I found the, you know, the little bit that I saw about the course very enlightening. Of 50,000 city and county governments in the United States, there's only 500 individuals that have achieved this. And so of the 50,000, Peg is one of the 500. That's commendable. A 240-hour course over the 12 months with live online sessions, three full days of classes, three certificate programs. So I was very impressed and wanted to actually have you come up here and to, you know, throw some praises on you, Peg. We're proud of you. We're excited for this achievement. And I have, do have a certificate for you, but like you to say something about the program. Tell us a little bit about what you learned.
The program was actually very enlightening. It went into succession planning. It went into long-range planning, strategic planning, risk management. Every month, we took an aspect of leadership and looked at it. And it was interesting in that we got a broad range from across the country of perspectives on how people were dealing with this. And we all came together and came up with solutions on how we could deal with it in our own area. So we had to do a case study. It was a very enlightening and rewarding program to go through. I appreciate the support of the board and the support of the CAO in going through this program and in making our organization a success.
It was a great pleasure that we recognized you on this achievement, Peg. We're again encourage all of our employees to receive and obtain higher education. It's just going to make you better as a person and then make you a better employee. So we're really thankful that you dedicated yourself to this, and congratulate you.
Thank you so much.
Next item on our agenda is item number three. Rita, are you going to be doing the explanation on this? And we've seen this before. I'm happy to see that we're getting multiple, I'm going to present this to you again, but we're getting multiple years up here, which is very commendable.
Well, it takes a team to win this type of an award. And if I could, I'd like to introduce my team a little bit later.
Please do.
I made them come. They're shy. They don't like it. The offices once again received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national award. It's a comprehensive report that must be done, and there's a comprehensive analysis of it once it is done. So you must study quite a bit to make sure you follow all the rules so that our financial reports are on the same level as everyone else in the country, and the rating agencies can look at it, those kind of things. Other people can look at it when they're buying our bonds, that type of thing, and see what a good standing we are in, in our county, which just proved recently what a good standing we are in, in our county, when we issued our TRAN and got such a good rating on it. I don't know if being told you about the sale that we had just last week, and we got quite a good bid of eleven basis points on that, right? It was really cheap. No?
I was out of town.
You were out of town. You were on the, yes. We have the cheapest rating that KNN had had from any of the ones that they had sold on their TRAN.
Congratulations.
And that shows, oh, I applaud you on that because it shows your conservative approach to the county on that. But we're here for the nice team we have built in our office of this award. And if they would please come up, I have Oscar Garcia is rolling his eyes back there, but he's in charge of this team.
Now, we know they're not that shy. Because I'll tell you what, you've got a great team here. When we went, as the Audit Committee, when we went through the process to find out there actually is a red, green, blue, orange book, they did a wonderful job. So they're not, they're not quite as shy as you say they are.
Well, they don't want to come down here very often.
I'm going to make them come down.
I want to take a picture. I do have, in addition to the plaque that they sent for our office, which they changed that, you notice it's quite heavy, and they're going to only send little emblems from now on. They sent a nice certificate for Oscar here as being the chief for the team here, and, which is very nice. So, and we're proud of Oscar. They're shy, Calvin.
Don't leave. Don't leave.
The chairman wants to have a picture with you.
This is Calvin Campbell. He is working on his CPA. He only has two more tests to take. And Tara Webly, and she has her CPA within the last couple of years. And we have
Justin.
All I can think of is Gerald Fields. He's related to Gerald Fields. He's a Justin Avila. I really can't remember the names when I have to. It's just here. I get shy too. It's amazing. But they are a really good team, and they work well together, and they do justice to the county.
Well, don't leave. We're going to come down the well. And this is heavy. This is real marble. Is there anyone else from your team here today?
Nancy, my secretary's going to take a picture too. Connie just walked in.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I know, we do. We have, we had a celebrity come in as we were... Madam Conway, are you here to say something during our public comment period? Okay, you have one more. You can just wait one more issue, then we'll have you up. I think, I think the real reason she's here is our next item, number four. We'll call it Marilyn. I'll tell you what, we're excited to see this, and I haven't cracked the book open yet because this is the, this is the big drum roll, the moment we've all been waiting for. We'll now have our presentation by Tulare County Ed Commissioner regarding the 2013 Crop and Livestock Report.
Morning, everyone. I'm here to present the annual crop and livestock statistics for your approval. I think you're going to be pretty shocked, but I want to thank Art Ariola and his staff at the print shop. They whipped this up in just a day or so, and we got our copies yesterday. They did an excellent job. This is the first time we put a photo on the back cover, and it's the business end of a cow carousel. But I thought it was pretty fitting. The ladies didn't mind too bad when the herdsman actually, they stopped the carousel for us to take the photos. And if you know anything about them, they vibrate, and they didn't like change. But all of our photos were taken by staff. So they did an excellent job. I know years ago, we'd take hand photos from industry groups, but it's kind of a team effort for us. And I'd like to thank Dennis Haynes, who has decades of experience working on our annual crop report. He couldn't be here because he's on an export call having to do with insect identifications for certain export programs that we have that are very important to us. But Leah Pereira and Jackie Baldarris each have their part of the crop report. Leah compiles the statistics and does a lot of the photo work. And Jackie makes sure it's in a real readable form that's attractive to look at. And also Rafael Garcia, each year for the last couple of years, has put together a display from our packing sheds and nut houses and cold storages, and our industry really supports this unveiling. Anybody that drives cross-country across our county can tell that we have a lot of permanent plantings going in. We had over 40,000 new trees for 2013, most of which were, no surprise, pistachios, walnuts, almonds, and even pecans. Our pecan acreage doubled. So we're happy to see it. Lemons also. We don't normally think of Tulare County as a lemon, heavy lemon production, but olive production is something that, it's not for the canaries, it's for olive oil. The thing that shocked me the most was that we had an increase in persimmons. I always thought of persimmons as kind of a 1990s crop, but they're growing in popularity, and we do export quite a few of them. Tangerines and pomegranates are something that for the last few years, I talked about always increasing in acreage, but they kind of leveled out. We had a decrease in tangerines where some varieties were pulled out. And pomegranates didn't do so well in 2013. We had some pulled out, and because of a frost event during bloom, some of our growers just left the fruit on the trees because there wasn't enough to bring in a crew to harvest it. So it's sad to see, but we hope they get to rebound. The commodity groups that you see in the crop report all had a pretty great year, and some of them were exceptional. Field crops was the only commodity group that had a decrease. We had 3,000 less acres of field crops, and we had this trend of, you know, more winter grains and our significant decrease in alfalfa, wheat, and cotton acreage. Unfortunately, our cotton growers are having to pick, you know, a crop that takes less water. So even though the California Cotton Ginners and Growers Association has these fabulous new markets for the cotton industry, they're going to have to bring in foreign product to meet those demands. The drought also played a role in 2013 for the large volume of cattle and calves that were sold, just because, you know, people didn't have... It's almost twenty-six percent increase from the previous year. And right now we sit at number one. Fresno County releases, I believe, next Tuesday. And remember their west side is decimated, so we, you know, we don't know where we're gonna end up. Kern County has not released and, you know, these three counties are the top three in the state, so I'll let you know in about a month. The top five commodities all showed a gain. Pistachios, walnuts, and almonds were five, six, and seven. So, you know, next year, if we have enough water, you know, we may see a change in our top five commodities. But milk had a decent year. I wouldn't say the price was high, but it was a two dollar and forty cent per hundredweight increase. I believe for this coming year it's gonna be better, but we hope the price will at least maintain. So we're, you know, at, milk and milk products being about twenty-six, twenty-seven percent of our total value. The top four are exactly what they were the previous year. You know, we normally see alfalfa and corn swapping out on the list, but pistachios is definitely an upcoming crop. And what you see in your crop report is, you know, a lot of young plantings. So as production increases, you know, we don't know what we're gonna end up with our top five. We're always the number one exporter here in Tulare County of goods. Because pistachio market has opened up, we have less of a percentage of table grapes and oranges on a whole, but by far oranges and grapes are top commodities for exports, excluding the milk production, which, you know, we do export a lot, but it's not part of our purview. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments that you have.
Let's start. Supervisor Ennis.
It's pretty impressive when you think fifty percent of this county is federal land. And when you look at the counties around us, Fresno and Kern County, they have a lot more farmland area to serve than we do. And when you look at timber sales, we're almost nothing. So what a great, great year for ag. Great year. Thank you.
Supervisor Sheedah.
Being a lemon grower, a little surprised that three thousand new acres of lemons have gone in recently. The one thing I noticed was the twenty-year comparison. And we're, we were, when I first came on the board, we've almost doubled our gross dollar amounts in agriculture, which is a staggering figure for ten years. So I think we're seeing the transition into permanent crops. And that's the increase in the revenue, which I'm sure all the other counties are seeing the same thing, there's a transition from row crops into permanent crops. So I expect that number to keep climbing substantially.
If you weren't gonna comment, I was on the cover, I love the backside, the back in there. And I was thinking about all these commercials with the cows and they're always shown in a personable way, you know, being in the girl's bedroom and everything. And so I was wondering if you got a release, signed release from these cows for this picture?
Well, they got photoshopped a bit, just a few spots that weren't real glamorous, so. They should be happy with that.
Bless you, I'm sure they're happy.
They didn't get embarrassed.
Yeah. The other thing I was gonna comment on, I got a kick out of our Economic Development Office in Tulare County, I mean, they're right on top of it, inside the page, leads the nation in agricultural production. I love that positive attitude by our ag, our economic development folks. And then just comment, I think it is interesting when you look at the acreage that we, the bearing acreage and the non-bearing acreage, because if you really want to see sort of the trend of where we're going, you look at something like avocados where there's only, you know, two hundred and thirty acres and there's zero replacement acres. And apples, same, similar, seventy-two acres, zero replacement acres. So if you want to see the, the growing part of the agricultural industry, you look at these non-bearing acres and you know where we're headed. And it's amazing, look at pistachios, you know, four thousand acres, and walnuts, thirteen hundred acres. But what I, that really sort of struck me too was the blueberries, thirteen hundred acres of production, eleven hundred non-producing. So, I mean, this is another major growing area. And then my final comment is that relative to the kiwi, we only show nine acres of replacement. This is the 2013 crop report. I know next year's gonna be very different because up in the northern part of Tulare County, I know one eighty, eighty acre block, another, I think, a forty acre block. So there's a number of acres of kiwis that have been, that are being planted, they probably just don't show up in this report, they'll probably show up in next year's report. But that's a resurgence of a, of a commodity that almost went away and is now showing a strong strength coming back. So the strength of Tulare County is its, you know, agriculture and it's, it's the fact that it is such a diverse portfolio of commodities. It's just an amazing thing to look at the number of million dollar crops that we have. When you compare us with the Midwest where they may have two, you know, corn and soybeans or something like that, and you look at what we produce out here, it's just a cornucopia of things. And it's amazing to see, and it's always, I always get so excited when this comes out because it's, it's the, it's the story of Tulare County and it's a very exciting story, very dynamic. Thank you.
Great report, Marilyn. Actually, I'm a huge fan of the cover and the back. I think that's fantastic and a view that I've seen my entire life, so it's really nice to see it on Tulare County Showcase piece.
Which board, the front or the back?
Both, both, I've seen both. But really, you know, this tells a heck of a story about Tulare County and really what we depend upon and what the lifeblood of our economy really is. It's gonna be very interesting to see this report and how it changes over the next few years because the impact of the drought, yes, 2013 was a very dry year as well, 2014 is another dry year. And the cumulative effect of these dry years is going to have an impact. And I'm just curious when we're really gonna start seeing that impact here on this report and see if that changes any of the trends towards less water demanding crops. And I really want to see what happens up and down the valley. I won't celebrate Fresno County's west side being demolished, but they, it's, you know, water really is the lifeblood of agriculture and we have to come up with some sort of a comprehensive solution. I know they're working hard on it up at the state and hopefully voters will agree and approve some sort of a water bond when it is put in front of them this November. But thank you for your work on this, it's a great report, and please do continue to highlight the dairy industry on covers and anywhere you can. I think it's great. Thanks.
And it may take a while because as we have problems with production due to water, prices go up. So it's kind of fabricated, but still, we want to be food secure. You know, if we just had the water, the growers do a phenomenal job.
Jean.
Yeah. Jean, we're so CEO. I normally don't comment on the crop report, but I love the picture of this, the cow that's trying to get her face in the picture. But the channel of former, a former board member, I noticed manure is up three hundred percent in value. And it's gone all the way from number forty to the thirty-second largest crop in the county. So we are full of manure in this county.
Our growers aren't wasteful at all.
I'm gonna ask you a question, because I, you know, I've seen a lot of new trees going up, it surprised me, you know, we talk about the drought and all those issues and everywhere you drive throughout the whole county, there are new trees going up, there are, and they're phased, there are new trees, you know, two years ago, last year, this year. When, when those new trees go in, because you showed quite of increase in number of acres of these permanent crops, you on the backside take off the row crops, so we actually have an increase of thousands of acres of plantings?
Not necessarily. It has to do with, you know, somebody pulling out some scrubby looking plum trees and then putting in walnuts. Some of the row crop acreage was taken out. Pistachios can take the alkaline soils over on our west side, more so. So I've, I've seen some kind of pasture looking grass being taken out and pistachios put in, in that case. So it's a hodgepodge of a lot of different circumstances.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know how we can maintain this kind of growth if, like Supervisor Sheedah, if you look at the twenty-year, you know, year-to-year crop comparison, we are on a steep upward trend even over twenty years. You can do a fi, if you do a five-year, we're on a steeper increase than the twenty-year. Is this, can we maintain this growth, Marilyn?
It's gonna take water storage. So it's gonna be really difficult without that. And, you know, if we have another bad year without rain, I think we're, it's gonna be sad.
Good, well, great report, Supervisor.
Oh, just, I was gonna make a, there was a study that came out recently, it was over, I forget the timeframe, excuse me, but it was talking about the loss of acreage of agricultural property in the, in the Central Valley. And the number was rather large, but the interesting thing about that report was that usually we talk about urbanization as being the causation of the loss of agricultural production. But in that study, more land was lost because they basically have just had to give up on it. And it's very thing you've talked about, the lack of water. So when you don't have water, you can't farm it. When you can't farm it, it's a lost acre, at least until something is done about the water situation. So this is, this is a problem that, that will persist, but one of the things I was gonna say, I've noticed in my, up in my area is that you don't find very many unfarmed properties. Used to be you'd run across a twenty here, a ten acre there, that was just, you know, either half-dead vines or not being farmed. But everything is being farmed, there's very few vacant pieces of ground up in the area where I live. And I think that's part of what you're talking about, Mr. Cox, is that you see this, as values are going up, even five acre parcels, ten acre parcels are being bought up by these larger companies and they're being replanted. And, and also what we do see is there are still some of these older vines and trees that are being taken out. And when they're being taken out, they're, they're, they may be at the end of their life expectancy, they may be a hundred-year-old vines and we replace them with a higher production type of crops. That will continue, it's an ongoing process. Agriculture's a very dynamic industry, it always has been and always will be. And I, I for one think you're gonna continue to see these prices going up because we just continue to improve upon the seed genetics, the plantings, the production levels go up. It's just an amazing thing. If you go back and look at pre-World War II production per acre versus today, it's, it's mind-boggling to see how much more is produced on one acre ground today than was produced like in nineteen forty-five. And that, and it just continues.
There's a lot of research done by growers before they're putting in their next crop. They don't just go to the nearest commercial nursery and pick out trees.
Well, I will be happy to make the statement, we're happy to celebrate being number one in ag production in the valley. Hopefully that will not be too short-lived, but as of right now, today, we are number one in Tulare County. And I think that's very great and we commend you, Marilyn, the job that you do, we know putting, putting these numbers together is a big job, want to commend your staff. Do you have folks here that helped you on this that you'd like to recognize today?
Yeah, Leah and Jackie, Dennis isn't here, and Rafael and a lot of our district supervisors who don't normally come into the office, they helped with statistics and Leah did a bunch of calling and, you know, I gave her some contacts for the places where, you know, the commodity groups that she was a little weak in numbers. And so it, it takes months of effort on her part to, to get that accomplished. I think Gavin and Rafael, Tom Tucker, the Assistant Ag Commissioner's here.
Have a stand. If you guys, all the ag staff, you guys like to stand, we'd like to recognize you, please.
Marilyn, how is Kern County stacking up? I know grapes were number two on our crop report. They were big into grapes, could they have a chance to go ahead of us?
They increased, I think it was about forty-five hundred acres last year of table grapes, which is having huge success. They've got dairies too, but not as many of, as us, so I don't see how they could. I, I think they will probably be in line with Fresno County, whatever that's gonna be, but hopefully we won't have to wait too much past next week to find that out. But thank you.
How might the public receive a copy of this report, Marilyn?
We'll have it online just as soon as Jackie, who's really knowledgeable about websites, gets back to the office and they can pick up a copy at our office. We brought some here to put in the back of the room and then on our Facebook page.
Great, thank you so much, Marilyn, we appreciate the report, good news. Okay, well, move to our next item, item number five, which is our public comment period. I'd like to invite Connie Conway to come up and we, I never have started a timer on anything Connie has done, and so we won't put a timer on this one. Is that okay?
That's okay.
I'm looking at my attorney, don't she tell me that's okay? It's good to see you.
Thank you. I really just came to check you guys out and the crop report also, because I happen to be home, as you know, the legislature's on, we're working in our districts for the month of July, so, and I guess I had to prove to people that I actually was working. So I got up and got dressed and said, my God, what am I gonna do today to prove that I'm actually working? And I am on my way actually to Dinuba to visit with Fred Reese and Reese Foods to celebrate their fiftieth anniversary when I leave here. But the crop report is always great. Always remember, per capita, Tulare County is always number one. So these other counties can claim that they're more, they have what, just remember, per capita, per acreage, we're number one, so never lose that. When I first was elected to this board, actually was asked to speak at the Farmer of the Year Luncheon, and I thought, well, I'm not a farmer, what could I possibly, you know, say that had meaning? So I went back and found the original crop report from Tulare County and compared them on a twenty-five-year basis. And actually, the, the acreage is about the same. And you can see, and as I looked at this report, you can see the crops that aren't as productive year by year are the ones we used to have, a lot of cotton, corn, wheat, and now more bountiful crops have taken that acreage. It's amazing to me though, after, you know, a hundred-plus years, it's about the same amount of acreage being farmed. So I'm very excited about that. And Supervisor Vanderpoel, you, you touched on something that's on the forefront of my mind, and I'll just share with you quickly because I know how important it is to all of you. I heard you this morning on the radio, Supervisor Ennis. Supervisor Sheedah is always in contact with me about water, and I know it's so important. And I want this crop report to be healthy every year, but without water, that's not going to happen. We'll have it online just as soon as Jackie, who's really knowledgeable about websites, uh, gets back to the, uh, office and, uh, they can pick up a copy at our office. We brought some here to put in the back of the room, um, and then on our Facebook page.
Great. Thank you so much Marilyn. We appreciate the report. Good news. Okay, well, uh, new, move to our next item, item number five, which is our public comment period. I'd like to invite Connie Conway to come up and we, I never have started a timer on anything Connie has done and so we won't put a timer on this one. Is that okay?
That's okay.
I'm looking at my attorney there, she's telling me that's okay. It's good to see you.
Thank you. I really just came to check you guys out and the crop report also, uh, because I happen to be home. As you know, the legislature's on, uh, we're working in our districts for the month of July. So, um, and I guess I had to prove to people that I actually was working. So, I got up and got dressed and said, my God, what am I gonna do today to prove that I'm actually working? Uh, and I am on my way actually to Dinuba to visit with Fred Reese and Reese Foods to celebrate their 50th anniversary when I leave here. Um, but the crop report is always great. Always remember, per capita, Tulare County is always number one. So, these other counties can claim that they're more, they have what, just remember, per capita, per acreage, we're number one. So, never lose that. When I first, uh, was elected to this board, actually was asked to speak at the Farmer of the Year luncheon and I thought, well, I'm not a farmer, what could I possibly, you know, uh, say that had meaning? So, I went back and found the original crop report from Tulare County and compared them on a 25-year basis. And actually, the, uh, the acreage is about the same. Uh, and you can see, and as I looked at this report, you can see the crops that, uh, aren't as productive year by year are the ones we used to have. A lot of cotton, uh, corn, wheat, and now, uh, more bountiful crops have taken that acreage. It's amazing to me though, after, you know, a hundred-plus years, it's about the same amount of acreage being farmed. Um, so, I'm very excited about that. Uh, and Supervisor Vanderpool, you, you touched on something that's on the forefront of my mind and I'll just share with you quickly, cause I know how important it is to all of you. I heard you this morning on the radio Supervisor Ennis. Uh, Supervisor Sheed is always in contact with me about water. Uh, and I know it's so important and I want this crop report to be healthy every year, but without water, that's not going to happen. Um, you probably heard a lot of rumors, you hear what's going on out there. There are negotiations over a water bond, but just remember, there is an existing water bond. There is a bond in place that can go onto the ballot. So, as the rhetoric gets heavy in Sacramento and people are fighting, it should be this, it should be that, um, just remember that there is one there. A bond that took six years' worth of negotiations. Many in the legislature, uh, I'm not gonna say they weren't born yet. They weren't there, uh, when some of us, uh, were, were new in Sacramento and a six-year negotiation in a bipartisan way that we felt, uh, represented water needs from the bottom to the state to the top, um, are included in this water bond. It was artfully crafted. So, um, I, like many, uh, am happy to be part of the conversation. Do we need to, to change it, make it more effective, maybe bring the price down? But, if all of that falls through and as the players all emerge and everybody wants something, um, it's always interesting to me, the ones that have the most are the ones that want to control what the others get and have, i.e. storage. We know how important storage is to us. Um, I think some of the, uh, southern regions are, uh, actually realizing how important storage will be to them for all their goals they have for water. If there is no water, they can't recharge. They can't do, they can't recycle, they can't do what they need to do. Uh, most interesting, the loudest protests over storage come from those that are served by the hetch-hetchy. Uh, in fact, it was on the ballot for them and they voted not to take, as someone actually put on their ballot in an election, to take hetch-hetchy down. Uh, oh, they don't want to do that, but they don't want to let anybody else have an opportunity to store water. And as this crisis, uh, gets further along, um, you're gonna see a lot of redic, but you all have my phone number and, uh, I'm always happy to give you the truth, uh, or at least the truth as I see it. Uh, so, that may not be anybody else's truth, but it's certainly mine. I've spoken to the governor about this, uh, working with the speaker, uh, certainly, uh, Senator Huff, my counterpart in the senate, uh, as we get into the details of this. But that, I think for me, that's the bottom line. And believe me, they've polled all of this, what works and what doesn't work. I think Californians are finally at a place where they realize, you know, this is it, bottom line, even with water next year. I think what's so distressing to me is that we could've done this in '09. It could've gone on the ballot, except, you know, after all that negotiation. And I can only help but think, if we had done that, if we had put it before the voters and the voters approved it, I'm not saying it would be solving all the problems that we're having right now, but certainly, after six years, uh, into water bond and all that, that it could bring to California, uh, I don't think we'd be in the, the dire straits that we're in today. So, um, very concerned about this. Met with Citrus Mutual and their folks yesterday morning in my district office and, uh, there's a lot of concerns out there. Uh, some folks have water, but not everyone. So, we want this report to stay healthy and, and I'm, like I say, just came to check you guys out. You all look pretty good. Um, uh, I read good things, so I hope everything is well. And I will be quiet now Supervisor Cox, cause I know you got the timer on me unless you have a specific question or any other thing I can answer for any of you. Uh, thanks a lot and keep up the good work.
I don't have a question. I just want to tell you publicly how much it meant to me to serve on this board with you, coming on this board. Uh, really, green, uh, meant a lot to me to, uh, to come in with you. You taught me a lot, uh, and I am so glad that you are representing us in Sacramento.
Well, thank you so much. And you know, green is a great word Supervisor.
I didn't stay green long.
We're very green here in Tulare County, as long as we have water.
I just wanted to, uh, publicly say, I had the privilege of, of working with Connie for eight years on this board and, and, uh, I wanted to publicly thank you for your service in Sacramento. And, uh, I'm only sorry that we changed the rules in a way that you weren't able to be up there for a 14-year period instead of just only six years. But, you have, um, served our communities extremely well and to be the minority leader, uh, as you have been for as long as you have been, um, first time that's ever happened in our county. And, uh, I just wanted to commend you. Thank you, uh, as a personal friend and as a great, uh, public servant. Uh, thank you for all your hard work and I'm still anxious to find what you're gonna do, uh, after, after December.
I have no idea, but I can't sit still for very long, so.
I know that, to be serious.
As you don't, now, I tried to get, I started it. Supervisor Vanderpool, I tried to get him to run for my seat, but he wouldn't do it cause I had visions of, we'll get PD elected to Sacramento and then I'll make a comeback. Because local government is so great. Uh, you know, working in Sacramento is not without its challenges and thank you guys for the kind words, but, um, it's the stubborn old Irish grandma in me, you know, that gets a hold of something and won't let it go. But, um, local government is, is really, um, you know, there's many of us that serve locally before going to the state legislature and, um, I can see a difference. I'm a little bit, um, I'm not gonna say prejudiced, but former county supervisors make excellent legislators. I don't have to explain to them what a triple flip is or an E-RAF shift, um, but anyone who's had a local government experience, it is, it is a shock when you come, but this is so great because, um, you have direct contact with the people that you serve and they're able to find you and you're so accessible and I think that's really, really important, um, that everything be as transparent as possible and that, that people have access. I think that's really mostly what people want is just to get a hold of you, which is why I, uh, 24/7 with the cellphone.
Great.
Connie, uh, welcome to your retirement party.
That's not why I came Alan. I'm still holding on, I got four more months. Don't speed it up.
I, I like to echo what the other supervisors have said about how proud we are to have worked with you and continue to work with you in the state legis- legislature. What a lot of people don't realize is when you were a county supervisor, you got as much done in Sacramento as you are today as being the minority leader.
Oh, wow.
That, uh, you did a great job for us in Sacramento, even as a supervisor.
You guys are gonna embarrass me. Don't do this.
Uh, on the drought issue, you know, I live on the east side and I'm a frightened water user. And there, you're not gonna see all the orange trees dried up and dead. I've got a lot of them on my street right now and they're valentias. But, a lot of growers are just taking them out. You're gonna see a lot of open ground. And so, CNN and Fox News are gonna come out, they're gonna find some isolated dried-up trees, but mostly, most of growers are just taking them out right now. So, unfortunately, it doesn't have the same impact as seeing the dried-up trees, but, uh, if they want to come out and look at them, you let me know because there are, my neighbors are in that boat right now.
And you know, that is, uh, and thank you for that offer and that is something that I always try to stress in Sacramento is that, um, you know, it's a gathering of folks from throughout the state and obviously people feel like they know their area the best. Um, but they make decisions every day that impact our lives here, um, and they've never been here. They have no idea, you know, what this is. Um, I would just, uh, uh, he's paying a dear price for it, but the, uh, incoming pro-Tim made the comments about, oh, well, you know.
Sagebrush?
Yeah, out there, Senator DeLeon, out there in the middle of nowhere where there's nothing but tumbleweeds. And believe me, he was inundated with, uh, he had to make a public statement and, and that's not what I meant to say. However, um, I'm sure Senator Vaidak was the first one at his door saying, hey dude, hop in the pickup, I'll take you for a ride if you want to see what's really down there. So, um, awareness is really certainly part of it. And Alan, I appreciate all that you're doing, your, uh, stay in touch with us. I know you're, uh, heading up this effort with all the counties on, uh, doing something about water and that's greatly, greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you for your service.
Oh, sure, thanks. Oh, gosh.
Connie?
Okay, Mike.
I also enjoy working with you up here, you know that. Uh, but hey, there's still work to be done, you're still there and you're gonna get that water bond for us. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to that.
Uh, you know, every day we say an extra little prayer, but as I say, I want to make sure people don't forget, the water bond is there and that water bond that we have is good and can go on the ballot as everybody wants to fight and change it and, and position themselves.
Or position.
That's our fallback position.
Yeah, but the drought, if we can't pass it in this, this atmosphere, we never will.
Yeah, yeah, that would be unfortunate, so.
Thank you so much for all you do.
All right, thanks guys.
And Connie, I'll wrap it up. Even though I didn't have the opportunity to work with you, uh, I had the opportunity to succeed you.
You worked for me Pete.
And, and get a lot of, uh, guidance and advice from you. Um, I really appreciate the work that you have done and, uh, certainly the road that you paved for me to follow and, and make my own, so to speak, once you, uh, your road took you up to Sacramento. Um, I, I think you made a really great point about local government and why it is so great to be a county supervisor and why I think that the legislature needs to make more effort to do what you're doing right now. Um, you know, you come here, not just in July, um, you are here on the weekends, every chance you get and you're an active part of your community. Um, and I feel like, uh, so many of your colleagues in Sacramento are, are isolated. They are in Sacramento, they stay in Sacramento, they forget and lose touch with what the real world is. Um, and it's so important for legislators to come back, uh, and live amongst the constituents that they make decisions regarding, uh, because otherwise you, you lose touch and, and it's easy to press a button or make a vote because you don't feel the impact, you don't know the impact. Um, but when you are an active part of your community, uh, you will know, uh, whether a decision you made was good or bad or otherwise. Um, and I think that's very important. So, the more that you can share that and bring your colleagues to see what their decisions are doing, I think the better off this state is gonna be. So, I sure appreciate your service. Enjoy your, uh, uh, couple-year or whatever length, uh, break that you're gonna have, uh, before the next run and, uh, I look forward to continuing to work with you, so.
Thanks, I appreciate that. You know, I do accuse some of my colleagues of living in caves on the weekend with no TV, uh, that they're not wandering around and, you know, examining the rest of the world or even the district that they live in. Um, and that's distressful to me, uh, because it's just so easy to do. One trip to the grocery store, sure, it takes four hours, but you'll get a, you'll get a good handle on what's happening in your community, so. That's what I tell them. And then they can enjoy some Tulare County products while they're in their grocery stores as we speak. So, thank you guys, I've taken up way too much time. Good to see you. Off to Dinuba Steve.
Thanks Connie.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move to our public comment. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I thought you were gonna close public comment. Now, move to our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on our agenda today under the county decree, please step forward and state your name for the record. And we will set a three-minute timer.
Hi, my name's Joey Rosa and I'm, uh, president of Tulare County Farm Bureau. And I'm here today just to say, uh, our family's been farming and dairy farming here in Tulare County for over a hundred years. I am so proud of, of, um, the diversity of commodities that we grow here. And I just want to reiterate to our supervisors and everybody here, how important of a role we play in the world in feeding people. I've had the opportunity to travel to different countries, uh, South Korea, Italy and a few other countries and our agriculture here is known around the world. Uh, there's a love for our products and I do believe that we help ke- keep peace on this planet by assuring that there's an adequate food supply, not just for our own country, but for other people around the world. And, uh, I think sometimes, uh, uh, I think as agriculturists, uh, I think we, we, we understand that, but I think sometimes the, 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 the larger population doesn't understand how important our role is in the world. And so, I just, I am very proud of our county, the diversity, and I just wanted to thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, real quick, Joey, was this your barn?
Uh, no.
Oh, I thought that was yours.
I was biased to the cover too. Uh, I, I do want to say too, one thing about the water situation, uh, being president for, of Tulare County Farm Bureau, uh, just starting in May, um, you know, I think in our county and in this whole area, we, we all have to join hands together and pull on this rope in the same direction because as we know, it's been stated several times here, without water, uh, we really can't do a lot here. And I think a lot of people really, truly don't understand the importance of what we do. And, uh, you know, I'll give you a perfectly good example, it's just a couple of different people, but, uh, I was in San Francisco getting, uh, uh, on a plane two weeks ago and in casual conversation, a person that was from San Francisco, we got to talking about the drought. And, uh, they really didn't know there was a drought. And, uh, so, I think we have a lot of work to do, but I think with Tulare County Farm Bureau and, and the cities, we all need to join together and make our voice loud and, and make people aware of how, what, what, how important of a role we play here, uh, in our state. Thank you.
Thank you Joey. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Mr. Solins?
Good morning, Jim Solins, receipt cooperative extension. If I take a couple of minutes, first I'll congratulate Marilyn and her staff on this wonderful report and it's so great to see us number one. And as well, as most all the ag commissioners have always pointed out, that this value, this crop value is a, is a gate value and not necessarily the value that each farmer has as a, as a profit. But, we do, don't want to lose track of in Tulare County is the, that this, this almost $8 billion crop value actually is better than $16 billion in revenue generation in Tulare County. We've talked about how, it was brought up how much our crop acreage produces since 1945. A lot of that has to do with the high technology that we use in Tulare County. Every farmer out there, that's pesticide, crop advisors, crop advisors, uh, all the shipping, the, the, all of the, all of those steps that goes through to keep this economic engine going, keeps those dollars in our county. And that represents much more than the $8 billion. It's closer to $16 billion as far as, uh, economic engine and in some cases, it's even higher than that. So, I just want to congratulate Marilyn and the ag commissioner on their wonderful report and certainly the, the farming, the farmers that actually produce those crops. And it's really glad to be here. Thank you.
Great, thank you Jim. And what else wishing to address the board this time?
Hi, my name is Mary Bryant and I'm with the Real Mooney Grove Project. Um, I understand that there is a 20-year plan that is being reviewed by the Board of Supervisors now. Um, I went in and met with Mr. Pillagard and we are not allowed to see the 20-year plan. So, I was wondering, is there any way that we can get a copy of what the plan is exactly?
Not been presented yet.
Pardon?
It's not been presented yet.
It's not been presented to you? Okay, from what I understand, there are a few things that we, um, would like to change and maybe not completely object to, but, um, it's my understanding that they wanted to demolish the koi pond and the concession stand and, um, my group was willing to raise the funds and do fundraising to make some changes. Um, we feel that there's some certain things now that can be brought back to start generating revenue for the park now, rather than wait so long for the 20 years. You know, I'm probably not gonna be around in 20 years maybe, so. Um, things like the park benches, the picnic tables, this kind of stuff. Um, and all the way down the line to where I have connections for, um, refurbished, um, carousels. So, I have the good connections going. I've got an estimate, we feel that there should be a fence around the park. Um, people, there's only nine rowboats left and our motto is to replace, to, to bring Mooney Grove back to the magical place it once was so long ago. I mean, when I was a kid, there was a zoo, there was, um, a lot of things there. Obviously, we can't bring a zoo back, but, um, the koi pond, I've gotten a, an estimate to restore that. It can be restored. Um, the concession stand, I can't get into it yet to do that, but, um, I've gotten an estimate on a fence for around the park. So, um, I just wanted to say that there are a few things that we would like to, um, get with the county on and see if we can get things rolling sooner than what he had proposed. So, it was my understanding that he already had it under review. Uh, that was what I was told, so.
Melissa, can you stand, please? If you can give your name and contact information to her, I will make sure you're notified of when that comes to the board.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, anyone else, step up and state your name, address for record, please.
Hi guys.
Morning.
I like all the dairy talk. Um, I work for Land O' Lakes. My name is Ronnie Enriquez, so, I'm gonna talk about, uh, I'd like to discuss a little bit about the pharmacy closure, uh, couple of concerns.
Yeah, that, that is gonna come up later.
Will we talk about it later?
Yeah, that'll come up as, uh, item number six.
Should I wait to talk?
Yeah, please.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And so, the public comment period for anything that's not on the agenda today. Please step forward.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rob Morton. I own property at 33511 Sierra Drive in Lemon Cove. I'm here to discuss the Stillwell Project, PMR 98-003, which was approved in 2003. Mining for this project started in 2010, is currently owned by CMEX, a corporation based in Mexico. Mining excavation is currently sixty feet deep and covers an area approximately thirty acres. Water has drained into this pit from an aquifer that supplies water to my well and my neighbor's wells, and as a result, the water levels in our wells has dropped sharply this year, and they are currently dry or nearly dry. There is a recharge trench along our property that has not been filled with water since September of 2013, which CMEX turned the pumps off to that trench without anybody's authority, the county or otherwise. As a result, in February 2014, letters were sent to Tulare County RMA, asking for the condition of approval for PMR 98-003, number forty-nine, to be met. A hydrology report was prepared by CMEX and sent to RMA on February 26th. A meeting of the affected property owners, which I am one, was held with the RMA in March of 2014. At that time, Mr. Spata promised a peer review of the submitted hydrology report. As of date, this date, we have not received a copy of that peer review. On May 16, 2014, CMEX personnel and their attorneys met with a large group of well owners, I was one, with the RMA staff to discuss this critical issue. On a personal note, my wife has renal failure, she does peritoneal dialysis at home, which requires extensive sanitary conditions, and to be sanitary, you need water. If you're not sanitary, infections can occur, which could result in death. As a result of our low water levels, it has caused an extreme distress for me and my family, as I am having to haul water in at this time. I have asked for water level data for my well, which I am on the well monitoring list, and the company that does it say they cannot send it to me. I asked the RMA staff on the May 16th meeting to send me this data, copies of this data, they promised they would. As of this date, I have not received copies of that data. I can stand on the roof of my home and see that excavation pit full of water, and I haven't received a report, none of us have ever received a report from the peer, from the RMA for the peer review, I have not received any copies of my well water level data, and it's extremely disturbing for me and my neighbors.
Mr. Morrison?
I know I'm out of time.
Can I have you give your, for Kiria, would you stand, can you give your contact information to this young lady here behind you, and then I will follow up with you?
Yeah, I have the conditions of approval here.
If you, yeah, just, your contact information will be the most important, if you can give that, or we'll follow up with you. Okay, next person wishing to speak.
Hello, everybody, my name's Anna.
Grab the mic.
There you go. Hello, my name's Anna Roscoe, and I'm the new district representative for Senator Andy Vida. I'm very excited to be here today, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dick Polly, I'm a resident of Lemon Cove, 3355 Road 248, up near the dam, the same project that Rob talked about. I'm a Naval Academy graduate, a graduate of USC, a master's in systems engineering, and I worked for the Air Force in civil engineering, and Raytheon Missile Systems, and soil compaction, penetration, and liquefaction. There was a peer review of the commissioned report, you will note there's no measurements in that report that she's passing around, there's a copy of that peer report. No measurements were based on a baseline, so the report to me is invalid, it's conjecture, it's opinion, not based on fact. There's no data that can lead to any conclusions, we need a proper hydrology report, contains that information, and every time a report's issued, that should be in there. There's no geological information in there either, with the geological cross-sections of where the data was taken, and those should be there also. The lack of rainfall, river flows, yeah, we know we're in a drought, but that's not the problem or the solution. Water flows downhill, goes to the path of least resistance. That big pond you see there is lower, and the water finds its way into it. That's the reason our wells are dry. The aquifer that our wells are on are only twelve to twenty feet deep. My parents drilled their well in the thirties, it's worked just fine for over ninety years, so, it's not the river or the drought. The lake is huge, as we said. I expect CMEX to abandon that site at some point, and they're just going to walk away. It's a big company, they don't care. We live there, you know, we can't plant gardens, we can't water our trees, it's a big deal to us, and what are we going to do when they leave? They should have recharged, put water in that recharge trench, they just walked away. The RMA is ignoring the interface with us and talking to us. We'd sure like to open that interface and get that recharge pit water put back in it. Any questions? Thank you.
But, the question I would have, would, we'd like to have one contact person, would that be Rob, or yourself?
I think Tom Karen, this would be the primary contact.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, we are Elias and Maria Rodriguez, we live in 33513 Sierra Drive, Lemon Cove, and we are neighbor Rob. Three of us received a proposal solution from CMEX on June 2nd, 2014, and the solution is to furnish up, to have the cost of drilling one well, or twelve thousand dollars, and that documents, holds CMEX harmless for any further issues. CMEX called, this friendly neighbor offered, well release our backlog for about two years, and, so we will have no water until then, and we asked RMA to get water back into the recharge trench, and we haven't seen any, any water, and we don't have money to drill a well, so, let alone the delay of two years to get the well drilled, so we don't, we don't have water.
And we are really angry or upset that we haven't been heard about our situation, so please, we need a solution really fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Louise Morton, and I live at 33511 Sierra Drive. I'm speaking in behalf of Mary and Orville Cloud, they reside at 33481 Sierra Drive, and they are living on social security and cannot afford an extensive well project at this time. They have never had their well go dry until March of 2014, and they have lived there for seventeen years. And George Benz lived on this property for thirty years previously, without ever seeing the well go dry. They started pumping air instead of water in February, by March, there was no water to pump anymore. They had to abandon their extensive garden, which has cost them a lot more money for food bills. The giant lake on the Stillwell Project sure has a lot of water in it, since there has been no rainfall or minimal river flows. Our aquifer is now dry, and the lake is slowly filling. No amount of rainfall or river flow will put water in our well again, as long as the CMEX lake level is far below the level of the bottom of our well.
Next person wishing to address the board?
Good morning, supervisors, my name is Martin Rodriguez. I own the last property on the south side of Lemon Cove, next to the Stillwell Project. I had some prepared remarks, but I'm just going to, kind of just toss a few things out here that I've heard. I've never been in a hall like this before, so thank you for having me, other than a traffic ticket down the road. You know, I hear us talking about water, which is obviously extremely important here. My neighbors are all farmers. I'm not a farmer. I bought this property up here nine and a half years ago, because I wanted to bring my family up here and just kind of enjoy the mountain area. But my family goes back in this valley well over sixty years, which is why I decided to come up here amongst, just the niceness of the people in the community. We hear about water, I hear about, I hear about a drought, obviously, we talk about worldwide agriculture here. I read signs that say, you know, food grows where water flows, jobs grow where water flows, and you've got a thousand acre feet of water sitting in a hole that was not there two and a half years ago, that's not being used. A thousand acre feet is a big chunk of water for an area that lives off water. Your agricultural success is phenomenal. Little pockets of water like this make a difference, it should be utilized. The five families, and I'm the south one, so as water does travel down, you know how much water I have. The non-use of this can be aggravating at times, because contractually, before this all happened, it was made clear between Stillwell and CMEX, the water level would be maintained. It hasn't been. Condition forty-nine here in the county states that water levels will be maintained, it hasn't been. These just aren't people not being able to water their crops, they can't take showers, they can't bathe. I mean, this is, would need to be, not just a community, but American right. We're here, we're middle class, I'm proud of being middle class. I enjoy what I do for a living, I enjoy coming up here, but to not be able to have drinking water, to not be able to shower, and to look out the backside of my property and see that huge lake of water just evaporating, is unconscionable, certainly in a drought condition. So I can ask you all to please consider this situation. Certainly, we're five small families, but we're a small voice in a community that obviously bonds together and tries to build something more than just individual activity or individual accomplishment. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Good morning, my name is George Clausen, I reside at 24270 Lomitas Drive in Woodlake, California, and I wish to also speak on a water situation, but I, against CMEX, but I'm referring to permits on 7101 and 85004. Those are the ones that are opposite me. The mining out of the Stillwell Project is processed on that particular mine. I'd also like, before I start, a few comments to let you know, or to make you aware, of all of these mines that has been permitted, there's approximately seven hundred and fifty acres of water that's groundwater, that is evaporating into the air that we do not have, and we will never get back until it rains again, and whether it rains here or not depends whether we get it or somebody else. So, and none of this was ever done. 7101 and 85004 were done, the 7101 prior to sequin, there's no EIR on either one. On 85004, the board, or the environmental officer let that go through with a negative declaration. Nothing has ever been said on these projects to take care of water lost by evaporation. We're just losing it, we have none, and today, everybody is talking about drought. Our problems are not necessarily so much from drought as they are from mismanagement and where we have lost this water before. Now, they, these projects are set up, and we had projects before, Mr. Callahan will follow me to tell you his specific problem, in which they decided to put in a recharge trench to help alleviate the problem. That was fine, they stopped pumping water in it. I've measured wells for nineteen years, once a month with CMEX, or whoever owned the mine at the time, and the wells have generally held fairly constant. This year, they're lower, and they're lower basically because there's no water in this recharge trench to force the water back. That mine is nothing but a great big well that is absorbing all of our water, that's pulling it out from under us. Now, you need to start thinking about this, because there's no reclamation plan for this project, 7101, it's written before SMRA, or approved before SMRA, and I would like RMA, and I have written my letter that was dated on the 12th of April of this year, and asking them to look into this, I've asked them to look in to the reclamation bond, is it sufficient to cover this? Don't get yourself in the same position you did with Artesia, and let them go bankrupt and leave here, and leave the county holding the bag with nothing being done, and us taxpayers having to reclaim or do something. So I ask that you get the RMA staff to start looking into these problems and do something about it. Thank you for your time.
Have some new information to add, that would be helpful.
I'm Frank Callahan, I reside at 25231 Lomitas Drive in Woodlake. This is a letter that I wrote to Supervisor Bill Sanders when he was in office in '01, complaining about the problems with the rock plant. I know this is a drought year, but so was '77, and I irrigated with a centrifugal pump in '77. Here, there. Right now, the water has dropped, since they have stopped putting water in the recharge trench, has dropped about ten feet. I'm irrigating three times instead of once. It's exactly what I said it was going to be in the past years when we were having problems. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time?
Good morning, Rhonda Schustrom, Human Resources Director. I'm not here to talk about water or cows, but I am here to talk about training, and I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce my newest staff member, our Training and Development Specialist, Jennifer Contreras. And if Jennifer will stand. Jennifer has joined us from after starting in Kalinga and traveling around the country and the world, and during that period of time doing training for various organizations. She landed back in Lemoore, and we were fortunate to have her join us, and she will be doing our training programs that we are developing, and as well as training programs that we have been doing in the past, so I wanted to introduce her to the board and also to the departments that are here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would you like to say anything? If you're a trainer, you better.
Yes, I do. In fact, I like cows, and I like farming, and I'm from that desolated west side, and I cherish this entire valley, so, one of my goals here is not only to cultivate that and plant my seeds here and grow roots, but to help our employees do the same, so I'm glad to be here.
Great, thanks, good to have you onboard. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment period? I will be the last then, if I can have Melissa and Kiria come forward. Like to introduce to the public, we have on my right, your left, Melissa Withnow, she is a new board representative that, and this is her second week, so she's just starting, we're glad to have her with us, resident of Isalia, and then we have Kira Feros, who is back with us for a while, filling in for Julieta Martinez, who is out for a while, and we're glad to have her here. So these will be, so that you can put faces to names on the phones and the emails, these are our new board reps. Thank you. Okay, we will now, seeing no one else, close the public comment. Okay, we will now, seeing no one else, close the public comment period and come, uh, back to the board for our consent calendar. We have items number seven through forty-one. We will pull item number forty. That is off calendar today. Any other items on the calendar, consent calendar needing to be pulled by any board members?
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. On item thirty-two, that is, uh, an extension of a contract with a local engineer. Um, I did, uh, look into that, um, and that contract is because, it did not go through an RFP process because of a very limited expertise um, that is held by this specific, specific individual and meets the need of the county. So I do not have any additional questions of that item.
Any items wishing to be pulled by any members of the public? Seeing none, we entertain, uh, the consent calendar with one motion.
Move to approve the consent counter absent item number forty.
Moved by Worley.
Second.
Second by Vanderpool, and the vote is unanimous. Mr. Shida fixed his red button. Okay, we will now take up our, our public hearing, which is item number six.
Two, is it?
Yeah, it's, it's, we're gonna do it consecutively. Allow a few moments here for folks to clear out that need to clear out. Item number six is, will be a public hearing in regards to the closure of the Visalia Healthcare Center Pharmacy. We do have an interpreter, Letitia Rodriguez, present. Does anyone need the services of an interpreter for the Spanish language? If you do need to have the services of the interpreter, there are headphones in the back. Letitia, would you raise your hand, please? So if you do need headphones, the headphones are back there, and she will provide the interpreting services. And we will now take up agenda item number six. Immediately following number six, we will take up item forty-two. Uh, this is a public hearing. In accordance with section one four four two point five of the Health and Safety Code, the Board of Supervisors is required to hold a public hearing prior to making a decision to close any county healthcare facilities. Specifically, this hearing is to consider the closure of the Tulare County Pharmacy at the Visalia Healthcare Center. The county may provide healthcare to all people determined to be indigent under Welfare and Institutions Code, Section seventeen thousand, either directly through county facilities or indirectly through alternative means. Accordingly, we will review the plan for the provision of pharmacy services today. We will be limiting the public comment to thirty minutes, and we will now have a presentation by our Health and Human Service staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jason Britt, Director of Public Health. Um, the county has owned and operated a pharmacy now located at the Visalia Healthcare Center for many years to help fulfill our Welfare and Institutions Code seventeen thousand mandate, which is to provide or arrange for the provision of medical care to indigents who have no other source for obtaining these services. As a result of this mandate, the agency has also operated the Tulare County Medical Services, or TCMS, program to fulfill this mandate. Under the Federal Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, two initiatives which provide state and federally funded and/or subsidized health coverage programs were implemented on January first, twenty fourteen. These initiatives are the Medicaid expansion and the Covered California Insurance Exchange products. The implementation of these initiatives have resulted in all Tulare County Medical Service clients obtaining coverage through one of these programs. As a result of the Medicaid expansion and the Covered California Exchange products, the pharmacy workload has dwindled from serving an average of approximately seventy-four patients daily to twenty-seven patients. The pharmacy staff have also been relieved of the workload associated with the criminal justice facilities as a result of the Horizon contract. HHA's SA believes it can minimize the impact of this action and provide greater access to, uh, and services for our TCMS clients by contracting with a third-party administrator who can provide services at multiple pharmacy locations. These locations have longer hours than our pharmacy, including evenings and weekends. Should the board approve the closure of the Visalia Healthcare Pharmacy, we will also make arrangements to notice and support services will be made available to ensure eligible patients' access to pharmaceutical services um, is maintained via the third-party contract. A couple important points I would like to make as I conclude my comments is, it is important to note that we have no mandate to provide pharmacy services as, essentially as a standalone pharmacy. Um, so there's no mandate to have a building or a service. We are just mandated to provide or arrange for the provision of those services. Second, um, point I'd like to make is that Medi-Cal and Covered California patients um, have access and choice to use any participating pharmacy that is covered under their health plan. Pursuant to Health and Safety Code, Section one four four two dot five, the county posted notice on all Tulare County Healthcare Centers regarding this public hearing on June twenty-fourth, twenty fourteen, fourteen days prior to the scheduled date of this hearing. HHA staff has checked and confirmed that, to date, the notices have not been torn down. In addition, such notice was posted in the Visalia Times Delta on June twenty-fourth. With that, we will respectfully request that the board conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed closure and transition of services from the Visalia Health Pharmacy.
Questions?
Uh, look at the staff report. Just now, I was, I noticed that, uh, there's a number of Rite Aid pharmacies that are listed. Um, there, there are two Rite Aid pharmacies in Dinuba. Is it limited to just the one in North Dinuba? The reason I ask that is, there's another one that's on the east side of Dinuba, which actually is closer than to the Cutler-Arosi community. And I'm just curious, is, is it limited to this, just this one Rite Aid? Or will they both be able to provide the service?
Here's kind of how the program works. So Capture RX, who's the third-party minister that works with Rite Aid specifically. They also work with Save Mart, Walmart, and CVS, I believe. What they did was, because we're a federally qualified healthcare center, they were able to get access to some data, and we sort of mapped our patients. They, they did it for us. And that's, um, looking at all of our population of clinic patients, not just the indigents, and everybody who comes to the Visalia Family Healthcare Center. And, um, those were the pharmacies where patients were accessing their prescriptions most often. And so from a business perspective on their side, that's where they would like to start. Um, but there is no, um, but if there became demand in other parts of the county, they could add them to the network.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Jason, how did we, uh, derive or come to the, uh, contract, or potential contract with Rite Aid?
Um, could I cover that under item forty?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Question I would have. Do we have you map this? That, I appreciate that. We asked for you guys to do that when we moved the Tulare Works, so great job there. We have people coming from Porterville and Tulare and, and other areas of the county accessing the pharmacy. Are they part of the twenty-seven?
Um, right now, the part of the twenty-seven are a variety of individuals who, who come to our client. We still have sliding fee scale patients that we serve. We still have cash pay patients. Um, but by and large, most of our patients have went to Medi-Cal, and we're not a Medi-Cal providing pharmacy. Um, and so a few mental health patients. So there are a few around, but by and large, um, they have gone on to other participating pharmacies.
Great. Thank you. Uh, we will now hear from our staff regarding the, uh, California Environmental Quality Act issue. Mr. Spada, I see you moving this way. Allow the presentation for our Resource Management Agency.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, Council, Mike Spada, RMA. The matter before you at this time is to evaluate the environmental consequences of the proposed activity. And, uh, our Environmental Planning Division has carefully researched, analyzed, and based on evidence concluded that the matter before you is categorically exempt or exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the general rule or, as otherwise known, the common sense exemption. That exemption is supported in the California Code of Regulations, uh, Title fourteen, Section fifteen, oh six one B three. Very briefly, after conducting the research and the analysis, uh, the evidence shows that there are approximately seventy-four, uh, patient visits to the affected facility that will have the service closed. Multiplied by two, that's a hundred and forty-eight round trips. So from a traffic perspective, the question becomes, how will that affect the environment? A hundred and forty-eight trips per day distributed, um, throughout Visalia on its face pursuant to the common sense exemption is not a significant traffic impact. Um, in addition, from an air quality perspective, because those vehicles will be traveling, uh, throughout Visalia, within Tulare County, in looking at the Air Quality Manual, that is a public document prepared by our air district, since the threshold of one thousand six hundred and seventy, seventy-three trips was not reached, therefore, no further environmental or air quality analysis is conducted. Uh, finally, since the affected, uh, existing facility and the facility to which the, uh, the patients will be traveling is in existence on its face, there can be no, um, aesthetics, agriculture, biology, cultural, water quality, supply, land use planning, noise, public services, and utility service impacts. Therefore, on the strength of the evidence and the analysis in the record, it is respectfully concluded that this activity, if approved by your board, would be exempt from CECL. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Spada? Okay, um, the public hearing will be now open. What we will do is, we will hear comments in regards to this item as well as item number forty-two. So anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Ronnie Enriquez. Uh, I reside at thirty-one sixty-eight Rutter Avenue in Tulare, California. Okay? Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for hearing me out. Um, a couple of things I just want to point out, um, regarding the pharmacy. Obviously, it, it does affect certain people and throughout the county that have, have been patients for years. Um, a couple of things, uh, want to bring up is, uh, obviously, uh, the clinic there, uh, the pharmacy's right next to the clinic. So it does, uh, it's kind of beneficial not to have travel time for the patients to have to go to another pharmacy when one is there. Uh, locally, they could just walk right to it. So it kind of makes it nice, being that a lot of the travel time is on buses and things like that. So it does help out the patients. Um, you know, uh, several people are going to be affected by it as far as they have worked for the county. At least seven jobs will be affected. It does affect our middle class. Like we talked about, we're always trying to make it stronger. I'm part of the middle class, and, you know, a couple of people said that, yeah, they are very proud of work and, uh, contribute to the community, so I'm one of them. You know, and it's just, uh, a, a fact of, uh, seeing if we could, uh, you know, look at ways to generate money for the county and also, um, the actual pharmacy. And, you know, we, we heard several things about Medi-Cal, Medicaid, and, uh, you know, one of the opportunities that we would like to look at is, uh, you know, maybe, uh, looking at being able to take different insurances and, uh, being involved in that group to generate more money for the county and, uh, keeping the patients and coming back to them. Um, I'm sure it's been looked at a little bit, but, uh, we got to kind of dig deeper and not give up on certain things, I believe. Uh, it was mentioned about, uh, the criminal justice and, you know, where are we getting the prescriptions at now for our, uh, you know, our, our jails and things like that? I think we're getting them from out of state, you know, which generates money for other states and not so much for our state or our county. So it's something that we need to look at as a whole, regardless, um, you know. And I, I'm just gonna ask that we don't give up on it so soon and just look at different opportunities, because I think far too often we kind of, uh, let things go. And I know profit, obviously, we got to continue making money, you know, throughout the county and stuff. And realistically, it's, it's not profitable to keep things open that are not money-driven. Um, but I think far too often, we look back and say, wow, we might have made that work. So I'm just, uh, bringing that out, out there and just keep, keep in mind that, you know, the people that have been affected by it and will be affected by it, county workers that have been in their jobs for several years, and we are middle class. So, uh, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Enriquez. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. And the public hearing is also closed.
Mr. Chair, just a question of staff, kind of following up on some of the comments made during public hearing. Um, Jason, would you just, uh, give a quick, um, overview of how the, the landscape of the health, uh, provision from the county's perspective has looked over these last few years? Clinic closures, reduction of services, realignment of patients, et cetera?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, um, you know, we, we had a much larger clinic system a number of years ago, um, that has, over the years, has sort of shrank down to our current location in North Visalia as well as a small clinic in Farmersville. Um, but I think the biggest change here has been the Affordable Care Act. And the fact that the Affordable Care Act continues to be a dynamic environment that affects the delivery of healthcare services in this country, and it's also affecting our healthcare delivery services in this county. Um, the other notable, um, things to note is that, you know, years ago, when North Visalia Healthcare Center was first out there, and we had the pharmacy at Hillman, and then we moved it, we didn't have Target Pharmacy to the north. We didn't have CVS on the next corner and Walgreens on the following corner in Houston, where a lot of people can walk to or take buses to get their prescriptions. And the, the last thing is, is that we, um, we did also pursue looking into, um, becoming a Medi-Cal-approved pharmacy, but that application has recently been denied by the state, although there are some questions around that. So it has been a dynamic, um, environment. Affordable Care Act has, uh, at this point, um, really taken our indigent caseload down to, uh, to very low levels, on really nothing at this point. I'm not saying that that's going to stay that way. And, um, from a service perspective, uh, right now, if you're an indigent patient, you have to come to Visalia or Farmersville to be seen, no matter where you live in the county. And you have to get your medicine at Visalia Pharmacy, no matter where you live in the county. Um, and now, if we were to have an indigent patient, they could go to the six Rite Aid pharmacies listed, which might be closer to their home or, or place of work, and, and be able to, um, get their medications on behalf of, of our program.
Do you have any additional recommendations or any other recommendations, um, after today's public hearing?
Mr. Chair, my final recommendation would be to adopt the proposed resolution regarding the balancing hearing and direct staff to close and transition the services from the pharmacy, health center. I'd be happy to answer more questions.
Any questions of staff at this time?
I have a question, just have a comment. Um, you know, I, I could appreciate, we never like to, we know that whenever we lay people off, that, that is a direct impact to people and their lives and to their, um, employment status. And it's not something that we do lightly. Uh, however, change is inevitable. This is a classic example of a changing environment where, uh, perhaps it was justified to have the staff of seven people. When we were a larger, uh, medical provider, uh, when we were providing medical services to the jail, uh, we're no longer doing that. Um, as of right now, my understanding is our TCMS patient load is actually zero. Uh, we're talking about twenty-one people. We're talking about twenty-one people, I think, being serviced by seven people. And certainly, in the private world, this probably would have gone away a long time ago or quite a bit before now. But there's just really no justification for the continuation of this type of service when we actually, the service can be provided better. It's a big county, by being able to spread it out around the county, people are not going to have to travel as far and they'll have better service, better hours of service. And frankly, it saves the government, that is, the taxpayers of the United States, a lot of money because we're paying for three pharmacists and four technicians. There's no just, we just cannot justify that kind of expenditure of funds. So I, again, I apologize for the impact I know this has to the people. I hope they will find other employment quickly. My understanding is, I'm not sure about the pharm techs, but on the pharmacist side of things, you know, it's not usually too difficult to find employment because of these, there has been quite an expansion of pharmacies within our region and they're always looking for pharmacists. So I hope these folks are going to be able to find employment quickly and effectively. But, you know, the county is not in a position of providing employment, we're in a position of providing for the needs of people. And here, there is no need to, that can justify this kind of expenditure of funds.
And so I see no need to go to closed session at this time. Bring us back to the board then for a, for action.
I move the approval of the staff recommendations.
Moved by Worthley. Second by Ennis. Please cast your votes. And the vote is five oh unanimous. Thank you. We'll now take up item number forty-two, a presentation also by Health and Human Services regarding the pharmacy closure and contracting services. Mr. Brett.
So, once again, Jason Brett, Director of Public Health, this agenda item is associated with the earlier public hearing and approval to close the Visalia Healthcare Center. The approval of these contracts will allow the county to provide pharmacy services to TCMS clients and retain our three forty B pricing. The three forty B pricing is a discount pricing program for patients of a federally qualified healthcare center. And I would also, at this time, I could take a moment to explain about how we ended up with the Rite Aid Capture RX contracts. Earlier this year, we began to explore our options for pharmacy services and as we were watching the data decrease and seeing individuals added to Medi-Cal and our TCMS caseload continue to drop, we contacted Stanislaus and Placer Counties who have also closed their county-run pharmacies and contracted with Walgreens and Rite Aid respectively. During this exploration process, we, we being Rob Stewart behind me, contacted all of the major pharmacies in the area, major being all of the large, big box retailers that have access to the three forty B pricing program. And Rite Aid was the only one who called us back, so, to be blunt. And so, since they're the one that answered our phone call and dared to venture in this with us, this is why we're proposing these contracts. As I stated earlier, Capture RX is a third-party minister who also works with CVS, Save Mart, and Walmart pharmacies and can add these pharmacies in the future if needed, if demand is there. And, you know, as an FQHC, we don't have to do RFP services for provision of medical services and we are able to contract with any participating three forty B pharmacy that we need to do so to take care of our patients. Case in point, we are in negotiations with other pharmacies and that you'll likely see in the future. Again, these contracts are really in place to provide the mechanism to provide the service once the pharmacy, standalone pharmacy goes away. So with that, our requests are to approve the three forty B pharmacy agreement with Rite Aid, the pharmacy services agreement with Rite Aid and Capture RX, approve the sale of the Visalia Healthcare Pharmacy assets to interested parties as appraised by the purchasing agent, direct staff to implement the necessary notification of patients, clients, and other parties, direct HR and D to initiate the county layoff process affecting the pharmacy staff and the issuance of notices of layoff effective August thirty-first. And also to approve the personnel resolution to delete the seven classifications that are being impacted as outlined in the agenda item. Unfortunately, a total of seven employees will be impacted by layoffs. In closing, I'd like to acknowledge that this has been a difficult decision and it is especially difficult on the staff who are going to be impacted by today's action. I would personally like to thank our pharmacy staff for their dedication, their loyalty, and hard work over the many years that they have committed to us, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
One comment, Jason, you, I know you meant to say pharmacist, pharmacy, but you actually in your presentation indicated we were closing the clinic, that we're closing the clinic.
The pharmacy at the clinic. Yes, it's been confusing for all of us. I appreciate that clarification, yes.
Mr. Chair, just a comment. Thank you for answering the question, Jason. I know this is not an easy thing for the HHSA staff to do. You have put in a lot of research and due diligence in coming to this decision and clearly you've come to the point where, you know, it's a balance of providing services that are necessary for the size of population that we are serving and providing the most convenient services that are available. And that is going to be through not a single location and possibly through multiple locations with this specific contract. And like you said, you are negotiating currently with several other pharmacies that could ultimately end up coming online as well. So this could be a real expansion of services and convenience for those fewer patients that do depend upon the county pharmaceutical services. So I'm glad you covered all those things, sure appreciate it. And I know that where our HR department can, it has and will continue to, as well as the HHSA staff, provide resources and direction for those employees that are losing their jobs through this action. So, thank you.
Do you have a question for you, Jason? On six, where you're deleting the following classification, there a reason why we just don't delete the positions and unfill the positions and deleting the positions completely?
I believe that's what we're asking to do.
I know that's what you're asking, is there a reason why you want to delete the classification?
Oh, because we no longer, with the closure of the pharmacy, we would no longer have a need for those classifications.
I'm just thinking how difficult it is to add a classification.
No, I, we're sensitive and I appreciate that, but I just don't see a foreseeable need at this time to keep them. But I appreciate pointing that out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will entertain a motion then for this item. Move approval. Moved by Ashida.
Second.
Second by Ennis. Please cast your votes. Unanimous, five oh. Thank you. We'll now take up item number forty-three, which is our urgency item. Mr. Spata, are you going to present this?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, county council. The matter before you is an emergency item. Succinctly, it is a proposed application to the State Water Resources Control Board for a county-wide, county-wide emergency bottled program. As I want to explain below, there is a very detailed staff recommendation. I don't see a slide on the screen, therefore, with your patience at the end, I would like to read it into the record so it's very clear as to what we are doing. As the board knows, just brief background, as the board knows, in July of twenty fourteen, your board reaffirmed your resolution declaring a local emergency due to a drought, a water drought in Tulare County. That resolution was originally adopted in February of twenty fourteen. The problem has gotten worse and as a result, increasingly, RMA, your board, and others have been receiving the complaints of many whereby there is a decrease in water in private wells. One of the unintended consequences of the decrease in water is that there may be an increase in the contamination of water from such chemicals as nitrates, arsenic, et cetera. In terms of a short-term solution, RMA, the CAO, the Office of Emergency Services has been working with the state to bring about an emergency bottled water program. This application is a grant, it's not a loan, it's for five hundred thousand dollars. And through our discussions with the state, they would be interested in entertaining an additional five hundred thousand dollar grant if this one runs out and there is still a further need in Tulare County. So the bottom line is that this service, if approved by your board and by the state, will provide fifty gallons of water for each household at no expense. In addition, and this is very important, the lack of water is not the only criterion by which individuals will be eligible for this water service. There must be a demonstration, and the staff report as well as the application states this, that there has to be some evidence of contamination of the water. Now, the CAO, RMA, HHSA, OES, we are going to use our combined efforts to analyze, organize this information so that we can assist in regard to meeting this second criterion. With regard to the distribution of this service, it is being proposed that there would be multiple third-party vendors. The private sector would be providing this service or distributing the service, not the government for efficiency reasons. By having multiple vendors, we can fan out throughout the county rather than folks having to come to one central location, thereby reducing inconvenience to the affected individuals. Flexibility and rapid response are the keys by which this program will be implemented. So with that, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do with patients is go through the seven items that we are requesting that your board respectfully approve. Item number one, prove applications submittal retroactive to July seven, twenty fourteen, to the State Water Resources Control Board for cleanup and abatement account interim emergency drinking water drought funds for five hundred thousand dollars to purchase and deliver bottled drinking water for residents in an emergency on an as-needed basis. Two, certify that the county had the authority to submit the application and that it was in the county's best interest to submit the application on that date. Three, authorize and direct the county administrative officer or designee to act on the county's behalf in all matters pertaining to this application. Four, authorize and direct the chairman of the board to enter into and sign the funding agreement and any subsequent amendments thereto with the state of California for the purpose of the grant, subject to county council approval as to form. Five, authorize and direct the Resource Management Agency Associate Director, Economic Development Manager, or the Grants and Development Manager to perform the following. A, serve as the grant administrator, sign funds request for reimbursement, sign the project's budget and expenditure summary, sign the certification of project completions, and sign the final release form. Six, authorize the Tulare County auditor to make the budget adjustments as summarized on the attached odd three oh eight budget adjustment form for fifths vote required. Finally, seven, authorize the purchasing agent to waive the bid process and enter into commodity contracts with approved available vendors with readily available supplies. That's the sum and substance of the recommendation. Let me say, Mr. Chairman, this, as always, was a team-based effort. RMA, led by the Economic Development Office, the Grants Division, the Public Works Branch, the Office of Emergency Services, county council, and of course, the CAO, all combined their efforts in a very rapid turnaround approach to get this done. And this was done very quickly and the state has been very cooperative and helpful to Tulare County, and we think the matter before you is in the public interest. Thank you.
Questions?
Chairman, I just, I want to thank staff, everybody involved for this effort. And one thing I had mentioned to the chairman and also to Mike and to the county council was if there was a way perhaps of, in this case, we heard it says urgent item, but suppose this came up and we don't have a meeting next week and we have this opportunity and we have the state of California saying, we've approved your grant application, we will fund it, you have our permission to go ahead and proceed. I'd like to see a way if we can have a continuing resolution authorizing our CAO or certain people to be able to proceed where we have this type of situation so that we, you know, we're dealing with a life and death kind of situation really that we talk about water necessity to people. And if we could do that, I'd like us to pursue that matter.
Mr. Chair, question. Mike, was this, first of all, good job on this to you and the team? I know that it took a lot of work to get this application together. But you mentioned there are two requirements that must be met, a shortage of water and also contamination. We have heard from several fixed income individuals and, you know, those in poverty or not in poverty throughout the county that have run out of water and may not be dealing with contamination. Are there any resources available for those residents similar to this that you are aware of?
We will continue to search. Unfortunately, in our negotiations and discussions with the state, they keep reminding us about the contaminated water. So on audit review, they would be looking for that kind of evidence to support the distribution. But we will continue to look.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask you to drill down just a hair for me? You talked about distribution, vendors, we're going to work with other peoples, this mean nonprofit, CSET, Proteus, people that are united way, people that are already working out in some of the disadvantaged communities where they might need water? Are you talking about Walgreens?
I'm talking about third-party purveyors who do this for a living without mentioning names, but your water, bottled water, private sector providers. That's what we're thinking about in terms of the vendors to make sure the service gets done quick, fast, and effectively.
And the rental cost of the possible rental cost of the equipment, would that be covered? Because you're now, now I'm hearing five gallon bottles of water stuck on a machine that you would push a button on is what I'm hearing.
According to the staff report, Mr. Chairman, state funds will cover the rental charge for the dispenser, namely, one dollar per month. However, residents would have to pay a six dollar deposit on the bottles. So it looks like a one-time cost of six bucks.
Okay. We just got this.
Yes, no, yes, sir.
That's why I was asking that. Okay. So there will be small upfront deposit costs.
Very nominal.
That will be, that could be recouped. Okay, great. That's all the questions I had. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but it's quite an accomplishment to get to this point. Thank you for our staff for pressing the point that it was almost going to be a case-by-case basis and we got a blanket approval. And what really, I think, impressed them was that we're so well-prepared, OES and our staff, that we're ready to move. They know Tulare County has the highest contamination rates, nitrate rates in the state. So that all came together and what's amazing is the potential of another half a million dollars because this drought is just starting. So it's going to take us, we're going to be to September, if we're lucky, or October before it subsides, if it does subside. So thank you very much for everybody involved.
Welcome.
But then I move for approval.
Second, and I just had a comment on this issue of contamination, because I don't know how broadly construed that is, but, you know, as wells go dry, they don't just sometimes just stop, they start spitting out a lot of sand. So I don't know if sand's considered contamination. Also, as you're looking at the top of the groundwater table, oftentimes it'll be, your contaminants may be concentrated there. So, and I don't know how, are we going to have to have individual tests done on these wells to decide whether or not they are contaminated or can we use that more of a blanket provision? Like the sand, if it's throwing sand, that's a contaminated well, they qualify, something of that nature.
As always, very astute question. We have been evaluating that with regard to how to implement this from a fiscal standpoint efficiently and also comply with the requirements of the grant. We're looking into that. What we are trying to do is not burden the resident by having them go out and pay the fee for water testing.
Spinaway for testing.
That could be working at cross purposes with the program. What we're going to try to do, as I mentioned just very briefly, is look at our existing resources and the studies that we have done and we are doing. And there's quite a bit of that. And I think, and we'll run this by the state on an ongoing basis, so it's not a surprise that on the base of the evidence that we do have, we can draw an inference that there is contamination. Or do they want site-specific contaminated levels for each and every well, which might be working at cross purposes with trying to help these people very quickly and effectively because that will take time. The lab has to prepare the report and you can see what can happen.
Okay, great. We have a motion by Ashida, second by Worthley. Please cast your votes. And is unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board.
That concludes our public meeting today and we have need for closed session, Madam Counsel. Counsel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, items B are pulled from the agenda, so the board will be addressing items C through M, and we do not anticipate any announcement out.
We're going to take a ten-minute break before we start closed session.
We usually do, anyway.